October 27, 2022, and we're going to start with an invocation of Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, we come today thanking you for our city. We are truly blessed to live in Ashland, Kentucky today. We once again ask for your wisdom and guidance on this Board of Mayor, Commissioners, as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and its people. Bless our city manager, our staff and employees, and those in attendance today. We pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I stand and salute high pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wertz. Do we have motion to receive and file the agenda?
Someone would you read?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hearings and reports. We'll start with our Commissioners. Commissioner Goode?
Wow. I got, welcome, everyone. I got a whole list of stuff I wrote down, so I'll try to be brief. But, but a lot of stuff is happening in our city. It's an exciting time. And I saw a picture of 25 new employees. We're growing. And 25 new employees had an orientation, went all over the city and toured all our, all our different facilities. They even went to the sewer plant. I didn't know what the sewer plant looked like for, until I was, you know, acquainted with it. I thought about Uncle Eddie and a big hose or something, you know. But, uh, uh, but that was good to see those employees and their orientation. If you notice, the G.B. Johnson building is down, I think, on schedule or before schedule. And it looks really nice. They got a nice fence around it right now. And we have high hopes there. Um, we got three new restaurants. Hibachi, why do you pronounce that?
Hibachi Express?
Hibachi Express, Poké or?
Hokey.
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 Poké. Anyway, it was, uh, and Sopa Pias and Longhorn Steakhouse. And then Chili Fest went great. It went fantastic. It was, it was great weather, great crowd, and I want to, Winter Wonder Lantern Lights is coming up, 14th of November. I was over at the Roundhouse the other day, and there's candy everywhere, Sean, isn't there? Candy everywhere. So if you come at six o'clock on Monday, the 31st, it should have always been on the 31st. But you come on Monday, it's a drive-through trick-or-treat, and the kids will come out with 12 bags. You don't have to go anywhere else. Just go through Central Park. The dentists are great right now. I mean, they're, they're the top of their game. Last but not least, I received a note that about made me cry. And it was from Gina Jevedon McDaniel. And she writes, and I'm glad you're here, Kim, "I received an article that said y'all had noted to name the pond at Central Park or dedicated it to E.B. E.B. loved the park and often called me while walking there after work. In fact, the morning after he passed, after a long flight, I found myself at the park and pond walking. I know he would be deeply touched by your kindness. I'm not sure anyone loved Ashland more than E.B. did. I still mourn his loss daily, as we were very close, but these kind gestures really do make a difference. Much love to the city." And I'm thankful for her and thankful for E.B. and the Park Board for naming the pond after him. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Spriggs?
I'll be introducing some guests here shortly, and other than that, I don't have anything.
Okay. Commissioner Blanton?
All righty. Commissioner, good job on nailing Sopa Pias, by the way.
I had to ask two or three times before I came up in the elevator.
I have to ask every day. So first of all, you know, we, just to say thank you to our law enforcement who responded to another issue, and Boyd County Sheriff as well. It never fails to say thank you all for, for putting yourself in, in harm's way for us. So trick or trade, trick or treat, aside from the city event and October 31st being our trick-or-treat, there's a couple other events that are happening in the city. At Cameo Arcade, there's an event on Friday from six to eight. And then on the 30th, the First Church of Nazarene is having an event also from five to seven. So two other events that are happening, if, if you're so inclined. And just one last note, you know, obviously, we've talked about, about the homelessness issue in the city, and I just wanted to, to just give a couple thoughts from, you know, it's, it's something that's definitely on, on our minds. And, you know, the mayor is obviously taking this very seriously as, as we move forward. First and foremost, what we said, I know our, our last meeting, we always say, is if, if you're in a situation where you feel unsafe with anyone, your first, as long as you're safe and you can get yourself to a safe, safe place, please call law enforcement. That's, that's why they're there. And, and making that call is critically important for us to get, you know, get you help if you need help, first of all, but then also have the data for, for where things are happening. Other than that, just, just on a personal note, you know, this, this is something that, you know, I know we continue to look at individually. And, and, you know, I've talked to lots of people who are out there on the streets over the years and, and, and learned a lot about, about why people are in these situations. And one thing I'll mention is, we, there, there's an idea that they're, they're all from somewhere else. And, and I'm not going to claim to know exactly where everyone's from, but I can tell you for a fact, I met a man on Saturday who was from right here. And he actually went to high school right here and was actually a standout football player from right here. Severe addiction issues on the street. And, you know, I think that people like to disassociate the issue from people that they know and love. But I can tell you, it's our friends and family that are suffering as well, just as the same as people from outside this area. So it's important to mention that. And also, one of our big tools that we're doing, that we have for, for issues like this is our wonderful nonprofits. And Mike taught me at, at Bruce Hill Crest Mission, you know, they, they have supplies and, and things for people that come in and need them. But what they really want to know is, why are they there? What's their, what's the root cause for them to be in that situation? And, you know, I know we'll continue to work on and, and, and continue to, to see everything that we can do inside the city building, outside the city building, as much as we can. But it's just important for me to, to note what I'm seeing. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Claver?
Thank you, sir. Just a couple of things. This, yesterday, actually, I had a board meeting with Ashland in Motion in the evening and Visit Ashland in the middle of the day. So two board meetings yesterday. But we, we made some great strides yesterday in streamlining the event coordination between the two and, and more to follow. But there's, there are some things in the works that are going to make things a lot easier in terms of who's doing what and all that sort of thing. So also, just a reminder that, that all of the events that all of you have mentioned are available on the Visit Ashland website, visitakym.com. So if you're unsure of what's going on or what's happening around the city, visit akym.com. You can see a whole list of everything. From the Ashland in Motion front, Brunch and Browse is November the 26th, and those tickets will go on sale soon. So look for that. And just so you guys are aware, the Kentucky Association for Economic Development is going to be in town with their annual conference on Wednesday and Thursday next week. Few hundred people strolling around downtown, staying in the hotel, that, all of that. So if you're out and about and want to stop by, let me know. I'm on that board, and it's going to be, I keep laughing, it's going to be the Amanda Clark Show. I'll get to do the welcome and all that sort of thing. So it's, it's going to be.
I believe I went to that last time they were.
Mm-hmm. So they'll be in town on Wednesday and Thursday. And if you want more information on that, just let me know. Finally, this is our last commission meeting before Election Day. Now, we don't really like to talk about the Election Day, but I'm going to mention it. Tuesday, November the 8th is Election Day. Citizens of Ashland, the most important thing that you can do is get out there and vote. And remember, the city buses are free on Election Day, thanks to all of you. So if you need to get out and vote, you can hop on a city bus and go to a polling place. Use that opportunity to use your voice. And to this distinguished body, I'm just going to say, it's truly been an honor serving with you. And no matter what happens on Election Day, I am your biggest cheerleader and glad to be on your team. So love all of you, and may the odds ever be in your favor.
Amen.
We all feel the same, Amanda. Yeah, so commission of action.
I think that's the one thing that we have strived hard here with this commission is regardless of our politics and personalities, that we have chosen to work together for the betterment of our city. And I think it has, we've had many good things happen during this term and continue pushing forward on some issues that we want to focus on to make our city even better. So I appreciate the camaraderie, the professionalism of each and every one of you. It's been my pleasure as mayor to serve with you all. I do want to mention one thing that I think happened since our last board meeting that's pretty significant. You know, one of the things that we always are criticized on, and any government entity is criticized on, is, is jobs. And so with great fanfare, we were able to announce that Big Sandy was bringing 30 jobs back to Kentucky and back to our downtown in a building that has not been utilized in a long time. And we, we know the Van Hooses, all of us, very well. And we are really grateful that they wanted to reinvest in our city. And we were glad to be partners with them. And we look forward to seeing those folks downtown shopping and eating. And of course, we think even more jobs will be coming as things progress for them. So we're very excited about that. I also attended the YMCA trunk-or-treat the other night. And if you've ever done that event, there is traffic jam usually all the way down, I think to Flying J. But I want to thank our police department. They were out there and, and trying to keep everybody safe. Appreciate that. And I appreciate always the opportunity to, to see families in our community come together for any event. But Halloween seems to be very fun for the kids. I do have a proclamation to read, but I want to turn it over to Commissioner Spriggs to introduce our, our guest.
Yeah, if I could, November is the National American Indian Heritage Month. And so we, the city is going to read a proclamation. And in the audience is the chair of that committee for the POG chapter. So Rita Sloan, Adam Sloan, could you come forward? And we'll present you with a proclamation.
I get told many times I'm the mayor of proclamation, so you're lucky to be a part of this. So, "Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples. And whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. And whereas their customs, traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas in honor of National Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now, therefore, I, Matthew Perkins, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2022 as National American Indian Heritage Month here in Ashland, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much."
Rita, if you'll stick around.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. I think we're on to our city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to turn it back over to Commissioner Spriggs for a introduction.
Well, it's a little bit ironic that it's National Native American Indian History Month, and we have some archaeologists here today to make a presentation on the findings at the, when they were doing the dig in the park. So I want to introduce Jason Flay. Jason's been here before. And Matthew Davidson, who, if you'll come up to the podium and give a report. I think everybody's excited to hear about our Indian mounds. And if you see Dr. Davidson's wearing a Batman shirt, which I want that shirt.
Take note of that, Hannah. Take note of that.
Batman.
It's my wife's idea. I'm soft spoken, so let me know if I need to adjust this as I go.
We can hear you great.
Okay. So yeah, I'm Matt Davidson. I'm an archaeologist. My day job is with Forest Service. But my real passion is with, with archaeological research and distributing that information to the public. So this is a really, I really appreciate this opportunity to be able to work with the city and, you know, help document its heritage. And Jason Flay is our, our project co-lead.
As most of you probably remember me from last time, and I'm the guy that doesn't need a microphone. I'm not self-spoken. The president of Shulley Consulting Environmental Archaeology Firm, that when we were approached by, by Matt to help with the mound project, we definitely saw the importance of the site. And we've been working together on, on, as many of you are aware, developing a, this into an economic initiative to utilize the heritage resources that you have. But the first step of doing that is actually finding out what you have through, through cataloging. And this is a report on, on one of the cataloging efforts.
Excellent. Thanks, Jason. I'd like to start with some thanks. This is a, a really kind of a big project, especially as a volunteer effort. So I'd like to start with Charles and Janet Holbrook, who brought this project to our attention, the activities in the park to our attention, so we could, we could kind of develop the effort. The City of Ashland, of course, the city commission, the mayor, city manager, the engineers and recreation employees of the park, that everyone contributed to this project. Really appreciate that. We also appreciate the city funding two radiocarbon dates from samples that we'll discuss in a second. And the University of Kentucky supplied a permit for the research. Dr. Menzani from the University of Kentucky identified the samples that were sent for radiocarbon dating. We had numerous volunteers assist with the fieldwork. And then the Ashland Boyd County Public Library provided some of the historic documentary information that we used. And yeah, I think that's it. Probably missed somebody because, again, this was, this was a really complex project. So this, this is a summary of a report that is required for the, the archaeology permit that we got. I just, I gave Cheryl, Commissioner Spriggs, copies of the, just the abstract and kind of the results. The whole report is 100 pages plus appendices. So I'll get a final copy of that after I get some, some feedback. And just let me know after you read the, that abstracted version, if you want to see the full report and give comments on that. We're very happy to address those. This is the city's resource. So we want to be sure that we're addressing concerns that you might have about the report. So let's see. Okay, so let's keep going. So if you can change to the next slide, please. And stop me at any time if you have questions. I'm a pretty informal speaker. Okay, so what you're looking at here is a map of the three tributaries that drain into northeastern Kentucky. So you're looking at Tiger, Little Sandy, and the Big Sandy Drainage. And then there's a, a series of small streams that drain towards Ashland in the northeast corner there. We'll just call that the Ohio River Drainage. So this is the, kind of a little bit of a background. And Jason will have to kick me off the podium because I can talk about this slide for hours. And you guys will probably fall asleep. Anyway, so we'll try to make it quick. For background for this project, what we wanted to do was understand where the mounds were as a part of Native American history. To do that, we have to know which, what mounds have been recorded in the past. So we, what you see there, all those red dots are mounds that have been recorded in northeastern Kentucky. There's over 150, or 140, at 95 locations. And so you see that each of those drainages, each of those, those areas, has kind of a cluster of red dots. And each of those areas is an area that was kind of repeatedly reused. Most mounds were for use for mortuary or other rituals. So you can think of them as cemeteries or churches, you know, kind of as, as a comparison. So once people establish themselves in those locations, they come kind of the center of an activity or kind of a territory. And people started building mounds over 2,000 years ago, when they were starting to invest more in agriculture as opposed to hunting and gathering. So you can see people kind of claiming territory, settling down, and having a ritual center. Ashland, of those four areas, Ashland has the largest concentration of, the largest concentration and number of mounds of any of those four areas. They're all kind of in the same spot, so it doesn't look like there's many. And so one last point, before you get bored with this, is that, that corridor, I'll call it, between Portsmouth and the Big Sandy Confluence has one of the, if not the greatest concentration of Indian mounds in, in all of eastern North America. And the Portsmouth Works is kind of the largest complex of those that we call Hopewell or Adena. Excuse me. And so Ashland, with, with it being kind of the largest cluster, is at kind of the crossroads. So you have the Ohio River, and then you have it going east-west, and you have a Native American Trail going from the Great Lakes all the way to the southeast. So we're at kind of a, an interchange. And I think a good comparison might be the 65-74 interchange in Lexington. So people, you know, it's, it's, it's the crossroads. So this place was really very significant. And one last point is that of all those mounds that were recorded in Ashland, several dozen in the Ashland area, the Central Park mounds are, are the only one that's left in the city area, as far as I know. But of course, correct me if I'm wrong, we're, we're learning as we go here. So that makes it even more significant. Okay, let's go on to the next slide, please. And how am I doing on time?
You're good.
Keep going.
Me while I'm watching? Okay. Go ahead.
All right. Kick me out when you're done with me. All right. So Central Park mounds I mentioned, it originally extended from 15th to 21st Street. There's only six of the mounds left from that long kind of string of mounds that were once present. In the 1870s, when they were first recorded, several were excavated, and human remains come out. So that's why we know that they're probably mortuary features, the ones that are left. Oh, thank you. Have added significance, of course. The site is on the National Register of Historic Places. It's a kind of a rare distinction for the northeast Kentucky area. There aren't very many sites on that, the register. There are also collections from those early excavations in Ashland at the Smithsonian Institution, potentially also transient. So what we wanted to do with our study is that, you know, even though it's on the register, the site's on the register, and we know a few things about it, we really don't know much about how, how old they are, what activities were done there other than the mounds, and how far does the, the evidence of activity extend beyond the mounds. And so when, when we heard about the playground being installed, we wanted to be sure that the, we wanted to be sure that the playground activities wouldn't impact a portion of the site. But to do that, we had to record where the site lies. So what you're seeing on this map is, if you see, can you, I can't see them, but there, there should be little red dots all over that map. See those?
Yeah.
So to do an archaeological survey, we, we do a soil test, we call it a shovel test pit, every, about every 60 feet on a grid. And anywhere you identify artifacts, you know, that's a find location. And then at the end of the day, you, you can put that on the map and say, this is the distribution of where artifacts were located. And so therefore, this is the extent of the Native American site. Or in this case, we also have historical period. period remains from the use of the park. What you're seeing in the top right is a profile of the soil layers from one of our tests. So, what we found in the study was that top, the top layer, the dark layer, is kind of the modern layer, modern trash is getting disposed of in there. But you also have it extending all the way down to that middle layer where it's all mixed up. So, you have remains of the use of the park going back to the 1850s. And then below that, that third layer, where it's just kind of one color, that's the remains of Native American use. That is, for the most part, across that survey area, is undisturbed, which we were very surprised by, considering how much activity has been done in the park. And then you can see in the bottom right-hand there, there's some of our volunteers and archaeologists doing it, one of the test pits. So, next slide, please. So, we'll start with the, kind of the recent, and then we'll go backwards. So, what you're seeing here is a map of the park. It's called LiDAR, which shows the topography. So, in about the center, that blue box is the survey area, which is about five acres. And then you see the mounds, the six mounds, there's those little bumps inside of the blue box. Overlay on that is the 1870s to 1890s racetrack that was in Central Park, so the first of two racetracks. We found from our historical document search. So, there were two racetracks. And then you see the, those black symbols on there. One is an amphitheater that's inside the blue box, and then you see some other structures that were associated with the racetrack. And right on top of the amphitheater is where the new, where the remodel playground is going to be located. And right in that area, so talking about our finds related to the historic use of the park, we found all sorts of historic refues, so pieces of ceramic, glass, some buttons, and part of a smoking pipe that Jason identified as being from the mid-1800s. So, could be related to that earliest use of the park, and it was right next to where the amphitheater was, which kind of makes sense. You're hanging out, you're watching a talk, you're smoking a pipe. So, it gives us a little. And then finally, on this slide, we recovered all kinds of gravel, slag, and crushed stone that looks like refuse from an iron furnace, in my opinion. And I think what we're seeing is the bend of the racetrack buried underneath the park. And so, you can see that in the image in the bottom right-hand, all that, it just looks like rocks. But that's distinctive from iron furnace refuses, and we could not test in those areas. We couldn't dig anymore, because it was so compacted, like a roadbed. Then you can see the stretch, the south stretch of the track there follows Shattan Drive. So, if you're walking down Shattan Drive, you're walking down the 1870s to 1890s racetrack, which is pretty cool. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so the, back one more, please. There we go. Okay. So, again, a little hard to interpret, because there's a lot going on there, but you're seeing basically the entire survey area, every test, soil test that we did, had evidence of that soil layer with Native American artifacts in it. And so, within the survey area, that entire area was used in relation to the mounds. But we don't know, excuse me, we don't know the total extent of the site, as we call it. So, we would have to continue surveying beyond that to know the total extent of the area used in relation to the mound. So, that would be a future research goal. The artifacts that we found were mainly stone tool-making debris, so chert flakes, we call them. And then we found some fragments of stone tools, like garden hose or woodworking implements. We found some chips of those. So, it looks like they were making and/or using those in relation to the mounds. And finally, we found two samples of charcoal in that buried layer from opposite ends of the survey area, and the city was generous enough to pay for radiocarbon dates on those. And they came back indicating that that area that we surveyed around the mounds dates 2,800 to 3,200 years ago, which is a little bit older than the mounds probably are based on the artifacts in the Smithsonian. So, what that probably tells us is this area was being used probably right before and as the mounds were being built. So, it was already a place of significance, and then they added to it with the construction of the mounds. And then, last slide, recommendations. So, one of the most important things, obviously, because this is one of the few mounds that are left, is preservation, and the city is doing a good job at that. But there, you know, we would recommend limiting any future disturbance within the known site area. And these recommendations aren't meant to be a judgment on what has happened in the past. This is just, you know, as an archaeologist, this is how we view things. And then, several of the, the mounds have large trees in them. If those trees were tipped from a windfall, it would destroy most of the structure and potentially expose human remains. So, we would definitely recommend considering removing some of those trees selectively. And, okay, so that's preservation, restoration. The ball court and other visual effects to the mounds, over time, consider potentially removing some of those. I know that would be very controversial, but just from the perspective of this is a sacred area, you know, consider it a cemetery or a church area for Native Americans. You wouldn't want that in your, you know, in your cemetery or your church. So, you know, kind of why would it be associated with this Native American ritual space? And then, you know, just any of those other visual barriers. Future studies, we're already talking with a student at the University of Kentucky, working on a project to survey without disturbing the mounds, a geophysical survey, to see what's left inside the mounds. Have they been disturbed in the past? Are there human remains in them? So, we could identify that potentially. Looking at the Smithsonian collections, maybe they could be displayed at the Highlands Park. It's a possibility. Be a great way to kind of honor the, you know, the mounds here in the city. And then finally, interpretation. So, maybe some updated signage in the park. That would be very easy to produce, based on the findings that we have here. Maybe working with Highlands Museum as well. They have a great display space there.
Let me jump in, interject real quick. And the one thing that we skipped over from the, the third and fourth slide, I can't read your tiny writing, on the studies, is we realize that this is not a venture that happens in a bubble. This is something that does require funding. And our goal, we would love to see more testing done on the park, but also, we would like to be able to have this done without impacting the tax base of Ashland. There are different grant avenues that we're pursuing that, if we can jump on, would be great. One of the things that was identified during some of the research, documentary research in the report, is there was a, there was a statement made in a 1950s article about the Ashland Park, Central Park being utilized as a, as an encampment, a Union encampment during the Civil War, which should only make sense considering the proximity to the Ohio River and trying to shore up the security of the Ohio River, and the fact that, as far as we can tell, this has always been a green space in the City of Ashland. The National Park Service has, through their American Protection, American Battlefield Protection Program, the AVPP, they originally sent out grants in the way of identifying battlefield sites. Now, they have just loosened up grant opportunities to look for staging areas and encampments. So, if that's the case, then that is an avenue that we're looking at pursuing that could provide a funding opportunity to test really not just the, not just the park, but the APBB, it looks for outside, the extent of the boundaries of these areas. So, there would be a case of being able to do testing on areas outside the park.
Okay, Jason, if I could stop you there, could we go ahead with our, thank you for coming. I really appreciate that, all the information you've given us. But I think the city manager and some other people would probably like to talk to you after the meeting on the ideas you've brought forth on moving forward with this. It's very interesting. I think our citizenry will want to know these things, and I really appreciate you coming today, and thanks for this report.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jason, Matt, thank you. Your passion is really outstanding. And I know we discussed when you were down here before, part of a bigger picture, that's not just in Ashland collectively, and you'd mentioned the grants previously. So, indeed, we would like to get with you after and set up some time to where we can tap into those, because it really is, as you educated myself and others on, it's a phenomenal tourist opportunity and to see a part of our history that people just don't know and appreciate. So, we look forward to, thank you for that information and moving this forward. A couple of things I'd like to hit, Mayor and Commissioners. First, I neglected to mention this last meeting. The state did reimburse us recently to the tune of $57,000 through FEMA funds for the winter of '21 ice storms. So, thanks to the staff who continued, you know, that's an effort to get those grants and stay on top of it. Also, I wanted to highlight a couple of things that have happened recently in the parks. The 17th Street Ball Field, our team, Sean, are you back there? They built those dugouts that are over there, so they did it at cost and did a fantastic job, and it looks really spectacular. Thank you for that. Also, camera installation that you all are very interested in, Mayor and Commissioners, is near completion in the AKY Sports Park and will be coming to Central Park next. We continue to have small incidents of vandalism that are ongoing. The xylophone has been a particular thorn in our side recently. Sean and his team have been replacing that on a regular basis, and much to our chagrin, it still gets damaged. So, the cameras will help with the enforcement there. And also, at the riverfront on the sculptures, the porcelain that was blown off during that really high windstorm a couple of months ago has been repaired, and it looks back to its original state. It looks great. One other thing I wanted to hit is talking about some line replacements. So, just very briefly, Mark put this information, Mark and Erica put this information together, but you'll see the 2021 line replacements that we did, about 5,000 linear feet. 2022 at 5,660. But also, that didn't, that number does not include the Belmont Street, which is about 4,600 feet and nearing completion. And I believe Mr. Cole and Mr. Hall, they are only doing services at this point, connecting services, and that work will be done. And then, we will get out for the community to know, as soon as that's done, they will do the rough patch to go through the winter, and then I believe that entire road Belmont will be on next spring's paving schedule. Is that accurate, Mr. Cole? And then, for FY '23, this is the plan. The picture you see on the right is actually from this morning. That's out in Westwood, and they're replacing 780 feet. Just a reminder, these were all prioritized based on the number of breaks that have occurred in the past. So, there's been problems at all of these locations. The 9,200 linear feet is what we're planning for next year. I learned this morning, we're not having, we're not really having a hard time getting pipe right now. What the challenge is, is a lot of the connectors. So, those are things that we're trying to preorder, and Mark and his team are trying to be creative about how can we keep doing this replacement to keep it moving forward with the line, excuse me, with the pipe replacement. So, I just wanted to share that with you. This is ongoing. It's something we focus on the breaks and the repairs a lot, but we have not lost focus on the line replacement and trying to get that overall break number down.
I want to thank you, city manager, our utilities team, and, of course, our finance department for finding ways to fund it. You know, it's critical that we continue to focus our efforts on our utilities. I think we all know, other communities around us are experiencing the same issues with sewer and water lines and the quality of water. And I'm really proud that this commission has stayed laser-focused on utilities and making sure we're getting the best product out there to our citizens, plus future infrastructure upgrades that we plan on making. Shows our commitment to this is serious. We know it's not only good for our health, but it's good for economic health to do that. So, appreciate that.
With regard to that Dixon Street, Phase 3, 3,000 feet?
Yes.
Is that going to be very disruptive to traffic through there?
It's going to be, have the same level of effect that Phase 1 and Phase 2 had. So, they'll mark it off. They can still transit. The biggest, Mark and Steve jump in here, but the biggest complaint usually is, as it's been on Belmont, when, after we have a rainstorm or something, it washes out.
Yeah.
We continue to work with the contractors on that to emphasize. So, we appreciate when we get that feedback of areas you might think we see it, we don't always see it. So, but that's going to be the easy part. Phase 4 is going to be the really, really tricky one, and that's the one on the north side of that project. And that's going to be in the upcoming years.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mayor, that's all I had.
Okay. With that, we're going to move on to public participation. Anyone with a comment or request may come to the podium and address the commission concerning matters related to city business, services, or personnel. Comments related to election issues or concerning personal disputes will not be allowed. Personal attacks, obscene or threatening language will not be tolerated. Presentations are limited to five minutes. A yellow light indicates 30 seconds remain, and a red light means the time limit has expired. Only one speaker is permitted per subject. No action will be taken at this meeting. Those with comments are asked to fill out an inquiry form and leave it with the city clerk for distribution to the proper city department. At this time, would anybody like to come forward?
I'm going to be short and to the point. On November the 4th, we'll be putting flags at the Veterans Cemetery. I talked to NIDA a little bit ago. They have, they're right at 1,665 veterans buried. And they're pushing right now, probably by Memorial Day, it'll hit 1,700. And also, y'all, Andrew, no offense, no offense. If you all see these commercials on TV that they talk about Marines being stationed in Camp Lejeune, about cancer and all this stuff, please, please, if you know a loved one that was in the Marine Corps and there, do not mess with them people, because they're not taking care of a veteran and their veterans' needs. Ambets has got a law firm out of Florida, and I'll have the information by the next meeting, and I'll have it posted down there on your old bulletin board. That way, they can call them, and they, and they're not taking any kind of money to do this. So, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward?
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Brent Turvey. I'm the executive director at Boyd County EMS. I just became the director in August.
Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it. I've actually been employed at Boyd County EMS for 21 years, so I've been around here a little bit. But I wanted to extend my thank you to the city. I recently reached out to Mr. Gracie and Mr. Perkins about our med units using the city garage for fueling. They were very accommodating. Mr. Hunter, the city garage was very accommodating in making that happen, not only making it happen, it made it happen in a very timely manner. And I appreciate the city's cooperation on that, keeping our units fueled and able to keep them in service quicker. I know it's something we don't always think about, but it's a very big deal to us, and I really appreciate the cooperation of the city on that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
Just for the community to know, so, Mr. Turvey, I believe you have a total of 12 vehicles and four that are dedicated to city service for EMS response. They pay significantly higher rates if they go on the economy to pay for gas. We get rates with the state, as does the county, and these are much more reasonable, much more reasonable rates. So, the four vehicles that are dedicated to the city can refuel in the city through the work with finance, Mr. Hunter and public services. They'll have separate accounts that they'll pay us. We can manage it down to the tenth of a gallon, and so, it just really works out better for us. They're not on the road going out to the county, and the county has also helped with their other eight vehicles to allow them to fuel out there. So, it keeps these vehicles on the ground. They're not transiting as much, and they're there for service. So, thanks for coming to us with that. I thought it was a great example of Team Morgan. We appreciate your reach and out.
Would anybody else like to come forward at this time? Welcome.
Hi. My name's David Williams, and last time I was here, there was an interesting comment about Boyd County being recognized as a top 10 county in Kentucky for tourism. That intrigued me, so I wanted to know as much about that as I could, and thought I'd just bring some information that I think will be relevant. So, I read the newspaper article and contacted Boyd County Tourism, trying to learn as much as I could. And I read a published report that was published in June by the State Department of Tourism. And sure enough, Boyd County was showed $101 million directly spent by visitors. Now, also, $147 million total, if you include the indirect dollars. We can go into all kinds of discussion about what that means, but it's convoluted, and, but the information is there, very detailed. And so, that's a huge number. Direct visitor dollars are defined as business sales, labor income, and taxes, and it could be city or state. So, and I'm just hypothetically, so if we're looking at business sales, we're the only factor, I mean, that's like 1,850 people per day coming to Ashland and spending $150. That's a lot of money. So, you know, and I had, I reached out, and I talked to the state tourism department, wanting to know more about this, because, and then I also reached out to the two sources for the report, Longwoods International and Global Tourism. Global Tourism is one Global Tourism is the one that actually wrote the report for the state, and they were the ones that, you know, they write these reports for all different states. And so, but in there, the tourism is broken into five elements. You have the food and beverage category, and in that, convenience stores and grocery stores are included in that. And if you're on the coast, like Outer Banks or something like that, I get that, you know, everybody wants to go and get groceries. But this categories are based on everyone in all different states, because they do that. So retail being malls and shopping centers, and let's see, there's one in here for lodging. Transportation, which included gasoline sales. And then fifth and last is recreation, and we could include any of those, any of our theaters and any of our, what we would call rush-off road, and all that was strictly recreational. So the question I had to them was, how do you determine who is a visitor? We're a border county, border state against two border states and all kinds of counties. How do you determine who is a visitor? And the scary part was, every credit card purchase is known, that's within those elements of category, and the cell phones for each one of those purchases are known, and they take cellphone towers to triangulate, to pinpoint, and confirm that that purchase was made by that credit card owner in that spot. Our data is not our data. Our data belongs to everybody. So what I'm trying to say is that data is out there, and it legitimizes a lot of what we're seeing. Now, some of these datas can be, whether they're double-dipped or something like that, maybe that's for a future examination, but nonetheless, from this data, every person who travels 50 miles is deemed a visitor. So you have to think, well, you know, who's, where's the 50 miles from? Now, keep in mind, Malibu Jacks is 2021 data. Malibu Jacks didn't come into opening until December 20, 21st or something like that. So they're not even in the data. And so their sales weren't included, so where are the visitors coming from? And I think, based on what I'm seeing, is that we are benefiting from what I deem as medical tourism. Because if you look at King's Daughters Outreach Centers, you see one in Olive Hill, you see one in Prestonsburg, you see one in Jackson, Ohio, and out behind Portsmouth, and if you draw your 50-mile radius, it starts to make a little sense there. I had a friend of mine who is a doctor who confirmed it, you know, he has patients from two counties away, and they like to come to Ashland, and they like to eat in the restaurant. They like to take advantage of the things that we have here that they don't. And so, and I guess, I guess my only point is that, you know, there is truth to this, and we have data here that I think it would be beneficial for us to understand a little bit more about that. That data can be purchased and can be further defined. And my only, my only reason to say this is, is if we're top 10 without Malibu Jacks, and we're top 10 without a racetrack and a casino, if we're top 10 with just who we are, then I would kind of like to see the commission be able to look at that data and say, you know, future things that we want to look at, is it, are they going to add value? And I personally have spoken with many people, and we've talked about the potential for parking garage and the convention center. Whether that data is going to support that or not, we would like, I think it would benefit us to really look into that data to see if those projects would really help us. And in doing that, I think if we're looking at multi-multi-million dollars, and I'm not saying that the project won't support itself, the data will tell the tale, but I would like to see if it is going to be something that, you know, 30, 40 million dollars, whatever it's going to be, I'd like to see it be put on the ballot, and I'd like to see us be able to let it stand on its own.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Would anybody else like to come forward at this time? Okay, hearing done. We'll move on to consent?
Resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting and authorizing and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners on October 27, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
New business?
Item A, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Establishing and Promulgating Certain Procedural Regulations and Prerequisite Qualifications Relating to the Recruitment and Selection of Police Officers for the Department of Police of the City of Ashland, Providing for a One-Year Probationary Period of Service Upon Original Employment as a Police Officer, Requiring Certain Prescribed Related Educational and Training, and Further Providing for Performance and Evaluation of Standards of Discipline for All Such Employees. This ordinance to be known and referred to as Comprehensive Hiring Ordinance for Police Officers for the Department of Police, and Repealing Ordinance Number 170, Series of 2021, as amended by Ordinance Number 26, Series of 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a comment. I'm glad we're doing this.
Me too.
Basically, for public knowledge, it's essentially, instead of, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is what I read, instead of having to advertise over and over and over again when we have a vacancy or a need for a police officer, we just have this rolling, we need them kind of constant thing. And I think that's a fabulous idea.
It's a good idea.
It takes so long to get a police officer on the street that the faster we can make that process, the better. So I appreciate, I appreciate you looking out for this and being proactive in that approach.
Yeah, good job.
Yeah, and by the way, there are lots of things that we all have different opinions on, but it's been an honor to, we have one opinion when it comes to supporting our police officers, and then that's absolute for us.
That's right.
So, you know, both years we've added positions in the police department, and it's been an honor to be a part of that, so thank you all.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Amending Part II Employment Process of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by Ordinance Number 51, Series of 2017, as previously amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Olive Hill Trucking, Inc., for the Purchase of Gravel, Stone, and Sand for the Department of Public Services and the Department of Utilities.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement with King's Daughters and Sons, the Subrecipient of $20,000 from the 2022 Program Year Community Development Block Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Amending Section VI of Ordinance Number 157, Series of 2020, Regarding Rules and Regulations for Special Event Fees and Costs.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Ratifying and Approving the Action of the Fire Chief's Acceptance and Execution of the Department of Homeland Security's Fiscal Year 2021 Assistance to Firefighters Grant in the Amount of $384,939, of which $349,945.36 is federal funding, and $34,994.54 is the city's match for a vehicle exhaust system for three fire stations and two-way radios.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Just want to again thank our fire department.
Yeah, great job.
For pursuing every possible grant known to man to help improve your department, but also save the city quite a bit of money. Thanks again.
I feel like we should start making you all like grant consultants to other cities.
I mean, it's made a great difference, and I know everybody up here appreciates it. I know the taxpayers appreciate it, and for all the job you do, so, yeah.
I see that rescue truck on the job all the time.
All the time, yes.
Money will spend.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled A Municipal Order of the City of Ashland Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Submit an Application to United States Environmental Protection Agency for the Community-Wide Assessment Grant Through the EPA's Brownfields Program.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Just for clarification, this is, this is what we do when we say we're committed to making properties available for economic development. We have to survey existing brownfields, see what we can do, see what we can work with, see what grant money we can get. We're serious about reinvesting in spaces that currently can't be used due to issues, environmental issues. So I appreciate pursuing this. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, reading and adoption of a resolution entitled Resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Expressing the Support of the Mayor and Commissioners for the Placement of a WWII Memorial by the Rotary Club of Ashland on City-Owned Property Located at the Corner of 17th Street and Carter Avenue, Commonly Known and Refused to as the Community Trust Parking Garage property.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in...
Yes, it's nice that the WWII boy will finally have a home.
Okay, all right.
I thank you all.
All right. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And amazingly, we have nothing else?
No, sir.
And no recess. We're going to go straight to adjournment?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.